Okay, so I will...
Be more powerful.
Oh yeah, very. You guys have pipes? Warren?
Yes.
Miller? How was it working?
All right. I don't know if you have...
She didn't pack it in?
Anyway, we did, we know we're gonna, don't even have problem with that. And that sort of thing. We did First Street about three or four years ago, some areas of First Street. We did the northwest portion up there, and a lot of it was in the zone, two years ago. So our next big section was south of Highway 12. We're not rezoning the property, we're rezoning the property south of Highway 12. Some changed, some didn't, a lot did change. Basically, what we do is, we look at what they're being used for currently, and compare that to the zone that is in the old map. And if it needs a change, then we make that change. We also look at some of the area, for example, south of 12, all that was low density residential, where none of it really complies with the low density requirements. So, we're gonna make most of that medium density, which really doesn't change much. A few be setbacks in backyard, and that's about it, in what you can build on. And then, properties like the elevator, the county building out there, you know, there's a couple of industrial buildings out there, that were still zone residential. So, we're gonna get those into industrial. And then, we have a one-mile extraterritorial district that Knox County has us zone from the city limits. So, we wanted to go ahead and change, well, basically change, but update some of the properties on Highway 12, going east. You know, like the waste company, and the county, the state yard, Jimmy's Antiques, and the property up there in the corner, that, across from the cemetery. So, we review it, we make our, you know, discuss it in planning zoning, we come up with our best options, and then, we have a public hearing. And we did that first public hearing on February 5th. There were some owners there, there was a couple of people that contacted us, and there was one or two emails, of people requesting either not to have a change, or change something else. And we also got a lot of input from the Cedar County zoning administrator, industrial versus commercial properties. So, we incorporated all those requests, and incorporated a lot of what the zoning administrator said. So, the way we handle it in the past is, we have the second public hearing, which we weirdly wouldn't have to have, but we like to do, I guess, be consistent. And we get comments from anybody that has any comments, and then, if we need to make any change, we would. Otherwise, if nobody has any different comments, we don't, I don't really read the resolution at this point. All we do is, we incorporate that to planning zoning, and then, hopefully, in the next year or so, we change the whole map. Then, we'll have to have the whole map signed off, and accepted by the city. So, is there anyone here for the planning and zoning, rezoning hearing?
No.
So, if there isn't any comments, then we're gonna move ahead, and we just need to know anything.
So, John, out of the people that contacted you or had questions or answers, did, were all their answers, like, everybody was satisfied with their answers? Or is anybody unhappy with the changes?
No, no. Really, the main comments were, they had one, that was zone residential, that was zone commercial. They contacted us, and said, the plans are eventually built a house there, if I could do residential, so we did that. The other comment we had was, the elevator, we were gonna zone commercial. They suggested that we do industrial, which actually is better. So, we changed a lot of the commercial, and we had two industrial. And then, I think, that was, that was probably, there was a couple of residents that just had questions about that. Let me answer those questions. That, we're able to help whoever had questions, and maybe, changes to the...
Thank you very much, and I commend you, and all the members for the effort.
Yeah, we could use a few more, but we're lucky.
Do you want to propose that we...
Okay. The motion to approve the... Hello, Karen?
Make the motion. Second.
Paul, Miller?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Miller? Anything else? Yeah, next one, the motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th.
Second.
Motion to the May 2nd, Miller?
I can't second.
You hold on here. Motion to the... You can vote, all right, yeah. If you are.
Yes.
You have to do the more than ten minutes that you can. And I'm voting yes. Okay. That's... Coin use. To approve the claims made on the...
I'll make a motion to approve the claims made on the April 8th.
Second. Motion made the second. Murphy?
Yep.
Pike? Warren?
Yep.
Yes. She wants to sign that she is...
I need your signature. Okay, the next item in business, our new business is a water support for waste collection site. I think we have...
Water project.
Oh. Well, okay, sorry. Water support for water selection site, yes. In your package. They did reach out to me at one point in time, and asked for my personal opinion. And I said, well, I'm not gonna speak for the entire city. So, I did informally ask seven people, and all of them agreed that they would prefer not to go back to a hard water system, and buy a water software. And so, the tentative plan is to do Yankton Water, that's the, the option versus the hard water option.
So, we're gonna be getting our water from the City of Yankton?
That's what it's looking like. Yeah.
You want to talk on this, Jill?
We find the biggest expert in the room.
What was the question?
So, my question is, are we going to be getting our water from the City of Yankton?
Yes. That contract has not been completed. The negotiation, it's been a very long process. And this started when the real water project got too situated on what is called THMs. So, we're that long, okay? If you drank the lake, you could probably have some cancer problems. The EPA keeps bringing those parameters small. So, we had to find a new source. And the THMs are caused by the contact of chemical, of the plumbing, and organics. And the lake is full of organics. We were under administrative order to fix that, and there was four possible sites that we could look at. And we had, we had a great plan, but the Legislative Corporations Committee took the money, and sent it to Omaha Lakehead to do a feasibility study on a lake, we paid them all the money. So, we gotta get it. Anyway, out of the four sites that we studied extensively, one was Walton Township, one was by Lindy, one was by Hayden, and the other alternative was Yankton. Yankton has overbuilt their process. It's not gonna be a handicap for them to supply us water. It is treated water. It will cost us $3.49 per thousand gallon, if that's the contract, okay? And they will guarantee us water for fifty years. The water, like I said, is treated. They have, they have tremendous system over there. And, and, I've only been on this work for forty years, so I can't touch it. But they've got a rainy well out there with fifteen runs under the river, and that's where they get that water. So, most of the, we're not gonna have the organics, and the treatment is up to them, not the real water. If we went the opposite way, we would have to build a pipeline from Hardington to our west tanks, which are in the neighborhood of Washington Hill. The rest of that, of our system is granted there. So, that's where we're gonna have to go. And the, when we did the math, it cost, I'm not gonna pull the numbers, but it was much higher than they had anything to us. And we would have to build a treatment plant, because the treatment plant that we now own and operate has been expanded to us, we can't drink our water. And I do remember in the room that remembers the devilous project, that's why we got the, we want that water treated. Anyway, we are going with the entity that guaranteed treated quality water. And that's what this whole thing has been about since the beginning. And the reason that I am so involved in this project is when I was a kid, my dad was mayor chairman of the trust, he was a boy at the trust, he was at that time. And I remember when a well went down, Dad, Ed, and Al Hesse, and maybe, Tim, maybe your dad was involved in that, I don't know. Go out to find water, and they were willing to take anything that was wet. And this is the best water we've had in this town, since we started with the real water project. I'm glad to see that some of these things will be in some light.
So, do we know, is our water bill gonna go up for state of the game, or...
Of course, of course.
Yeah. Which it would probably would any option.
We're buying water from them at a little bit lower than we could produce it. But that twelve, twelve million, eight hundred thousand dollar treatment plant will buy us water. You know, everything goes up, but our, our operation is, hopefully, the cost of operation is low, because we're not having, like, we're not having the tanks, we're not having the fuel, that. All we have to do is maintain our system, hopefully.
So, do we know about how much it will be going up, like, percentage wise, or...
Our, the cost to us will not be any higher than the cost to anyone living in there. That they, that's in the contract. So, yeah, our water won't go up, it isn't gonna go up tomorrow. Now, this is gonna take a period of time to get connected, and up and going, and running the night. I, I'm fairly certain that the cost to the project will level out. And then, we will have to deal with the cost, with increased costs of the water, which is no good. Another thing that prompted, or that pushed us in that direction was if the nitrate problem, which is all over this part of the state, would affect that source, and plenty of it. They haven't got any means in which to treat it. So, it takes a lot, it takes a lot of, of problem, of hardship. And we can buy the water for a little bit less than we produce.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment? Just a, just a consideration. Although the hard water option would be good for water softener sales, just keep in mind that'll put a lot of stress on your existing treatment plant, as well as a new one. It'll be more demand on wastewater, or this sort of...
No, no, no. Go proceed with that. Water, if you can, in here? I guess. We're looking for comparison, what we pay now, and if it's not, then we proceed with that.
Make a motion for the same one.
I'll say that. Motion made the second. Pike?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I need your signatures on the other ones.
Okay, our next item in business is Cedar City Light Cleanup Day. We had the school, the community wide service, we integrated it in a day. Greatly appreciate their effort, and the impact that they had in our community was tremendous. It's a kind of a historical thing, we have and hadn't have, and traditionally have had, a cleanup day that's looked like a lot of different things. At one point, I had network, multiple dumpsters around town, where you could bring anything, put it in the dumpster, and there'd be times where it'd pick up branches from the curb. And so, I don't know exactly what that looks like, or what it's gonna look like, but I know the patrons have asked, you know, what you would like to do, or what we could do to help them out as far as a cleanup day. And I know it puts a lot of extra stress on Dustin, just depending on what you, what Citywide Cleanup looks like. And I don't know how much you call it, dumpster, you know, if you get a big raw dumpster too, if that's the way you wanna go, or...
That's about five hundred. About five hundred.
I don't remember how many times they did, but I think it was a mass, the last time we did that was a lot of material that we went through.
And last year, we didn't pick up any items, we didn't pick up debris and stuff. And we have a lot of single people who don't have a way to carry that debris out to the dump. I get a lot of calls about that, for the cleanup. That aren't able to do that, so that, they're really interested in that, is the brush and the flipping and things.
I don't know what you'd like to do, but... So, we think, what do you want, maybe to pick up branches, and even lawn clippers become issue, because if you put them in a, a lawn bag, then you have, what to do with the bags, and get them to the dumpster?
Sure.
And physically have to, I'm sure Dustin has opened three hundred, two hundred, or maybe fifty bags, and say, do the life plastic bags, and dump the grass, pick it up.
Well, I can, I have a, I have a, I have a, I have a, it's, it's, well, for them to take on the, the, they're more in competition, they're in competition with the other, yeah.
So, another thing that we picked up in the past was, maybe, pieces, but I don't know. If people are gonna pick up cement, or take cement to the curb so we can pick it up?
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. But, I don't know what else we, other than branches, I don't know what we could really pick up, unless you wanna do, you know, a dumpster or two, until they're full of the five hundred dollars, or whatever you wanna do, whatever you guys think is best.
I want a different dumpster. I think a dumpster, I don't know, it would, it would have a fifty dumpster, if I wanted to roll up.
It'd be about the size of this wall.
We do roll up for five hundred dollars. For five hundred dollars.
For that kind of stuff, for appliances and that kind of stuff, or...
When I did mine, when I was moving our stuff, I rented, rented it, and it, for two weeks, you could have it.
And you could put anything in?
Except for paint cans and stuff like that, gas, liquid stuff.
And it's five hundred dollars, full, they don't charge you for the stuff you put in, they charge you for the roll?
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't by weight that it mattered?
It could not be heaping over.
The four of us, right there, the ones where I've seen in the past, from Park, over here.
In that parking lot area, where I've seen it, in that little slab of the parking.
Do you remember where we did that in the past? That's where it was?
He could choke up in there, and we go get, and bring it down, and put it in, and then, when it got full, so we called for it, we got a couple. She probably can't have anything over there. So, it's... Five hundred bucks, we do, we do, we do.
It's a rough estimate of five hundred, right? It could be about four hundred or to five hundred.
I've got a little, you know, once they're full.
Yeah.
We got trash laying off, because the dumpsters ain't there, they're there before.
Yeah, let's get some present, for, for, you know, just... I know, over Yankton, I think they're cheaper, turn a little up, but then, it's by weight.
Forty-one dollars.
Because it was, ours garbage, what I called through, when I got that dumpster.
Maybe, yeah, let's get some present.
If you take, a lot of people don't have a pickup, if you take stuff over there, it's kind of difficult.
Yeah.
You make a pickup over there, it costs, if you got your pickup box full, twelve dollars and eighty cents. So, people add now, look into the cost, the potential cost of that, and, from there, and a June, spring cleanup is just as good as May, right? Next item in business will be a new laptop for the maintenance department. Yes, Dustin? Tell us what you need, Dustin.
You know, I just need something that works better mainly. The one that's on my desk right now is so old and outdated, I don't know how I can get anything done on my foot without it.
I'd like, I'd like a motion to...
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion made that a lot of Dustin purchased, or he purchased a laptop so he can do his job, yeah, very good. Webber?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Murphy? Yeah, I know. Okay, the next item would be, Dean Lizard's building a drainage on Omaha Street. And so, if you look in your packet, I don't know if you had the opportunity to drive by there, but if it had rained, we definitely could handle that water.
I'll make a motion for the first one. I'll second it.
Motion made the second, Miller?
I'm gonna have to see him.
Murphy?
Yep.
Pike?
I got, I got one question. When you got that second building, are you gonna put another vein from behind that building, or what's the reason?
Pardon me?
When you got that second building going to the west of what you have, is there gonna be another desolation by high that building? That one, second one. You know, you got a trench, you got a trench behind that first one?
No.
There's not gonna be no more?
No, there's falls up there.
So, we're not gonna have, from where Stan Dearing lives, right to the west again? Or east again? You know, where your, where your new building's going, now, you're not gonna go all the way to the west side of that new building and put another trench there, connected to?
No, so, currently, the natural flow through the property, and then, goes to the southeast into, you know, that's...
If that's all, you might not do any more, yeah, job, you know?
Yeah. The fall's up there, to go back into the hill, upstream.
Thank you, Dean. Pike? Warren?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Okay, next item is, is a possible purchase of the magical, sorry, pothole machine. So, those of you who have experienced the pleasure of having a few less people in town, the pothole machine is, was leased or rented to us for two months. We've used up a month already, we can't skip days when it doesn't rain. If it's here, we're paying the rent, and we've not, fortunately, been able to use it as much as we'd like to, but it has made a tremendous difference. They are, they called us and asked that if, when we take it back after the two, if we take it back after the two months, they have to solve a free different people. And so, I guess, the logic here is that, we're just doing a great job. We can handle it with the people that we have, for the most part. And so, what, guess the ask would be, the whole total cost is sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars, is that correct?
Right. So, sixty-five, okay.
Sixty-five, okay. Sixty-five thousand more dollars.
We paid the curb sixty, sixty dollars, and it'll come off at sixty-five, four.
Yeah, 'cause we rented it for three thousand dollars.
Six thousand dollars.
A month, so it'll be minus twelve thousand dollars.
If we, if we could buy it, prove it tonight, and then, if we just pay the six dollars, and get it to, you know, it's hard. At least if they have four towns there, waiting for it to come up, and then, it's gone.
And we did do a little research into the cost, and we have that in your packet as well. On the final packet or page, there's, it shows our current position that we have on the street funds and balances, and we have sufficient resources to purchase that machine, and to keep it here, and be part of our, our services that we provide.
I think, once we get our, all our, next to the curb, we're through a paper ten, and a lot of people see that around our curbs, like, right next to the curb. I talked to people down in Lincoln, and they said, we got a, we got a grinder, don't we? We got an eighteen-inch grinder, and you put on a skid loader, and you dig that out, eight inches deep, and then, you put three-quarter inch red rock in it, and pack it, and then, you spray this patch in there, and that'll eliminate a problem of ruts right next to the curb. So, we can fix our whole street. Some places, like on Omaha Street, there's a cutout, you know, sewer line or something, you know, it gets real bump, and we can cut it out, put the red rock in there, and fill it up till it's supposed to be done. So, we can actually, it's gonna take us a while to do it, but if we own it... So, we can actually, it's gonna take us a while to do it, but if we own it, then we can, and Dustin knows, we didn't have that many days because of the rain that was coming down, and can't fit it in a whole, uh, dry. So, Dustin's been on it, so if you got any questions how it works, that's the man to talk to.
How's it work?
Pretty neat.
Simple words.
There's no manual labor, you just push the wand around, if anybody's watching it going.
And you, you might have listed the bills of our oil that we had in the tank reserved or whatever, separated and can be used. And so, we have a tank of oil that somehow is gonna get, somebody's hopefully gonna come and, and see if they can recycle or put it to some use, so we're having to purchase oil to make this work, but still the cost is not prohibitive. And then red rocks available, and we get that building right to a plant, or make this plant so.
So, I've taken my truck down four times, um, because I gotta have a three-quarter ton truck to haul that thing, and I go down there and I load up two hundred and fifty gallons, and it's usually a hundred and eighty degrees, and by the time it gets across, it's a one sixty or sixty-five, and then six, seventy coming. I go down there in the morning and, and load up, and this last time was the mess, because they had problems on, on their end, so. I've been down there, Dustin's been down there once, and I've been down there three times with oil, and they did it. So, that's, it's easier, it's easier to do that than to have a big tank full of oil and then it just now, you know, we got sick of that stuff. So, the oil's hot, and as far as I can see, Dustin can do, that, their batches are in there.
And it seemed like they're stuck pretty good, so. I mean, it's not the same as a new street, but it's definitely, that's improved before we had.
But we still have to bowl up with Mr. Stefan, it's a compressor tool, all the, all the dump out of there, making sure it's clean as it can be, you know, so there's a lot of stuff that's in there that needs to be rolled out, and that big compressor that I think Randy Stefan owns. So, we've been doing that at night, too. Except for the rain, which we have to wait till Friday, so.
Well, my suggestion, I'll make a motion to purchase this flat basher. Sixty-five, four, if we purchase this.
There's a bomb in the second there.
Okay, motion to make a second, Miller?
Jason, do you have questions?
I just feel like it almost gonna last.
We had one down in Lincoln, about my scene, down in High Twenty, High Eighty, they had it since two thousand nine, nineteen, that's still in there. There's a lot of driving on that, prepared to go.
Like, they filled the pothole, and then it was still there five years later?
It's still there, it's still filled.
Are there other places we can rent it from? Like, this is the only...
Yeah, North Lincoln's got five of these, and they bought them from this road company, they have one they have left, and when this is gone, they purchase a bunch of new ones. That will knock some ass, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, one man does the whole thing, but we don't have a care of fifty thousand dollars to buy it.
I guess we have one, we can buy it, use it for a couple of years, like, sell it.
Is it something we could rent out?
Yeah, we could do it.
Rent out, out of towns around here, 'cause they're, they're envious that we found this, and they would like to have something like this, so. And they've, I've been approached, a couple of different towns, would like to know what they could rent, and I said, we gotta get our town done first. So, we're not gonna rent it out till we get our streets finished, till we're done, and we can rent out, just the machine, not the oil or the rock, they have to get that themselves.
I think, I think even we did it for a year, a year, a year, that was, this one.
But I know through the, through the two-year, two months lease that we have, or rent that we have, that they've hundred percent guaranteed that they would take care of it, make it so that, so if there's any issue, plus whatever, Dustin, I mean, it runs off of diesel in there. Yeah, so it's...
Does it have an oil heater or not?
How old of a machine is that?
Uh, either five or six years. I believe the engine on this is twenty-eight, and the power number is twelve.
Any game? I'd, I'd say yeah.
Okay, yes.
And Murphy? Heights? All right. Okay. Uh, next item, business for possible hire of a digital media professional. I was in contact with a lady who does this for a living, she helps out with cities, webpages, cities, anything digital that we have for our city, she would be willing to help us out for feet. And I, I said, what kind of feet? She said, what are you gonna do? How much are you looking at? And I'm just like, I don't really know, but I guess...
She's gonna do Facebook or what?
Anything that we want her to do, she, she will take care of.
Does she service, who's the girl?
She, she works at Duval's Recreation, and I cannot remember her name. Sonia, um, she was a former student, and twenty years ago, in Lincoln High School, and she does this as a part-time job for other places. But I was just gonna see, if you're curious, me even talking to her about it, and if we wanted to get a quote, like, if we wanna do everything with her, then it's gonna be, I need to ask her, if you're, if you're considering, like, if we have ten things a week, or if we have twenty things a week, or thirty things a week, or a month, like, I don't know exactly how we, or how we fit it, but if you're interested, I will pursue it for free, because I don't, I don't know where we're at, and we're, sometimes we're gonna have to start over, because we don't have a pass week, so we can't even modify and do our own Facebook things, so we don't have access to our own Facebook account. And I realize that that's not an investment, because I set up my Facebook for myself, but I don't know what burden there in life to get this to work, or if it might be good. She can come present as well, okay, come and talk to you.
I just see some of the stuff she's done.
Yeah, I'll bring a presentation.
Yeah, if he can bring some, or even give us some stuff.
Sure.
We go and look at, and get my idea, have her present that maybe next evening, and maybe, and I do like to see what she's done, so.
Yep. That's just, that's just, she was, I was gonna say if we had interest, and then she was gonna, you can talk to her.
I think we should definitely look at hiring someone to do that, because that, you guys like the, that piece of info, uh, meeting that I went to, they had people that would go on to Google, they would Google it, and, and the first things that came up were all these websites, and they're all outdated, and, like, the pictures were good, but then it would talk about, like, the Q one twenty-five, which was about eight years ago or something, so then they didn't believe anything from the website.
Sure.
So, I think we need someone maybe to kind of, it might be a lot of work at the beginning, and then maybe check it once a month, or something like that.
Sure. Yeah, kind of, you know, same thing with the code forcer, which was Oklahoma, started just getting through logistics and making sure we had codes that were forcible, so it was heavy front end, but then it stabilized at that point.
I do know a lady, the lady that I was talking to about, uh, she was at that meeting, the firework planning meeting that you guys went to, D D W O K, and she does this, she does that thing, and she would be willing to do it, too. So...
Let's get some information.
D D W O K? Okay.
I'll make one kinda, the planning would be great, but I'm gonna update theirs, part of the city website, often, once a month. If anyone's been there, they would, they would help it.
And just...
All property.
With, when we get our new code books, which are in the process yet, it'd be nice to have those available to every citizen digitally, and, yeah, and it is an investment, but I think it's a good investment to keep us up.
It would probably save a lot of calls into the city office, people asking questions or stopping in, wondering, I mean, that some people aren't really looking at the internet, but some people will.
And then we'd have one central location or hub, so when we had something come out, send a picture to this place, or this person, and it's done, it's being here, and it's, you know, in minutes, seconds, it's out there now. I'll look into both of these.
Is that in, like, doing the swimming pool and all that other stuff?
Anything in the city.
Okay.
Good. And that's what you wanted to know, is like, is it the pool? Is it plumbing is on, or whatever, because, because you...
Well, hopefully.
Yeah, and, you know, yeah, so, we'll have to make sure, we'll express that to both, and then when they talk, I'll... And I'll try to come up with some kind of standard, S B, what they want to do, like, there's just a flat monthly fee, and, whatever. Okay, I will look into that. Next item is a fire, home, water system and con... So, all right. Somebody knows, know about that.
Well, that's the during, during bit, is to redo, there's an old red shut-off that comes first out of the floor, and we can't get that thing to operate. Um, the next shut-off, you have to have it in an exact spot, and otherwise it leaks over there. And if you think you got it shut off, you gotta pull it back about a quarter inch to actually get it shut off, and then the pipe, our hose is hooked to, is pretty much welded itself on, and that, that hose leaks, and I can't get it off. So, the, uh, Mike would change all that, he put a new backflow control valve in there, that valve's supposed to be changed every five years, and I don't think that valve's been changed in thirty years. Um, he'd also cut a hole through the wall, put the access to the outside for whoever's filling under the fire trucks, because that code that we have for that, the order's the same code we have for the ambulance bay, and that's all hit by, by, and stuff in there, and we can't be having people sleep around that stuff. Um, this is a bit that was given already last year, but didn't get brought to us, and he said he would still honor the prices from us. Um, I don't know, Dustin not back? It'd be nice to have some kind of a lock on the, it'd be a two, two shut-off type deal, that way it can be left on during the summer, so they could turn on, off outside, but then it'd be nice to have some kind of a lock on that, so that they have, come and get a key or something, and tell Donna that they're getting water, so that we can keep a little better track on who's pulling water and when, because there's, a few times I've caught some trucks coming up down there, and I called them and said, did it work? And they said, no. So, then I may even call Donna.
So, they're close to quarter again, they tell it?
Yeah, but to tell Donna how many gallons they use, that would be a big deal for that part.
Yes, there's a, a piece of paper in there, and they, they write down the meter where it is when they start, and then they write it down when they're done, and then I build that out every six months, I build that out, so.
Doesn't it just put a meter on that?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask Dustin, if we could put a meter, meter, is there a way to put a meter, meter outside?
Uh, without it freezing?
Well, no matter, we'll, we'll, we'll have that shut-off and drain, but...
I'd, I'd probably have to do a little, and do...
Yeah, if you can find a dial or something that we could just screw on the wall that could read, read the water.
Anyone have a...
Yeah.
Who'd use an M D V? Track and check if nothing does.
But I wouldn't know who's using it necessarily.
Well, we have to have that report every time they do it.
They could put a camera out there, right there, and put it in her computer, and that way she can see who did the guy say on so-and-so.
Yeah.
And that would be a separate, uh, I don't run over here all the time.
Well, they've all got phones, though.
But who's supposed to use it?
Well, it's like when they're working on the highways.
Oh, it's not the fire.
No, they'll come and get a, a tank of full water.
I don't, just for your, we're gonna work on the street.
Water all the time.
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Anyway, that works on the street. That would be sick.
Yeah.
Okay, then, then it's probably, then it'd be tight. So, if they had a camera there, they could say their names, and she could have a file that they can, every place is getting five, five dollars a gallon of water, or something like that.
And the issue that ties directly with that is whenever we have a major intake of water there, we have residents that bring, we, quart jars of water, sure, they have sediment in the bottom, but they can't launder their clothes, we have them, yeah.
And yes, the phone calls that I get, I would prefer that they got water somewhere else.
Sure.
We had a hydrant somewhere else for people to fill up for that kind of usage. It makes my life a lot easier.
Could use that.
Were you talking about that?
Just because of how long.
Could we use that hydrant up there by your place, or, you know, that, you need somebody else to water, they could do that on that hydrant up there.
Even on the north side of town, they don't see that?
Yeah.
Because they have the issue when they take it down the south side of town, right?
That's where we issue.
Right.
We don't have any issue on the north side of town. Yeah, we should look into that, that would solve some issues. By itself, and you have to issue yours with fire time, you know? It's convenient for you, right?
Oh, yeah.
The tools, people out there for... But then, that's, that's a big event, darn it, it's kind of water, fills the capacity. Yeah.
Got a four-inch line or...
It's a six, neck down.
So, putting up four-inch line, so they could fill with that capacity somewhere on the north side of town? Would be an option.
It would be an option.
Now, how you're gonna do that, what would you, what would they do?
Is that, I was wondering, maybe, right there, is that...
The whole reason they fill in the fire department is so they can do it fast.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's just like fill them out of the fire.
Yeah, we could do something like that, sediment on the north side of town, then we wouldn't get the sediment, and on the south side of town, we get that all, we've got. And where would you put it?
Somewhere there's a cement street.
Because it's gonna be heavy, heavy truck trucking. You wanna look into that, would be a good spot, and do something like that.
Yeah, I'd try to figure something out.
Yeah, would you? Yeah, let's do that. But I, I think, like, even, and I'm, I'm motion to do that, so we can get it for the fire.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion, let's see, second, if they even second it. Murphy?
Mm-hmm.
Heights?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The concrete part of that, is about that big hole is up in front of the fire hall? That's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Um, I don't have a, maybe, a tour, I don't have, never will you?
I got, I can even make a price on how much it's compared from, from the intersection to the west, all the way to the east side of the fire hall.
Yeah.
And I guess we could just measure, have to see how much concrete's gonna be in Adam, that move, hey?
Yeah.
And then, I can get, the yardage, you know, have to be eight inches thick, because those trucks are so heavy with water.
But if we're gonna do some concrete work to the fire hall, and I know Adam's been on me about, well, if we're gonna do the street, I'd like to do it all at the same time, because, you know, that way you can flow it together, instead of having dry, dry up concrete, up to new concrete again.
Are we taking bids on that, or we could... I'll just...
Well, we'll get Moon's bid, and then I think I'll call out to the Hyler, um...
Yeah, please.
Put their names up there on Hyler.
Doyle?
Yeah, Doyle. And just write out the numbers, and take it the same way, so they got something left, too.
But I think, I think Mark Miller's gonna be the cheapest place to get concrete that they can charge us on this street, a hundred and sixty-four dollars per hour.
Yeah.
Otherwise, a hundred and fifty, that's hard. So, that, Steve, I think I talked to, out there, Joe, Joe, so.
So, will the concrete, that's...
It's something I wanted to, yeah, just bring up, so that everybody knew that.
All right. So, we can put our numbers together, and say, oops, we're gonna work on estimates for that. All right, perfect, thank you very much. Okay, the next item of discussion, they have a full-time maintenance helper for Dustin, not full-time, part-time maintenance for Dustin, helper, helper, you guys wanna do that?
What do you need, Dustin?
Um, I don't know if I need full, full-time or not, but if I could get somebody that wants to work, like, three days a week, to help in eight weekends with me, I said that would be about perfect. I know that's gonna be kind of hard to find.
Can you keep a full-time guy busy?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, how many people would we hire, both? Is that with mowing or not mowing?
What's that?
We're sort of gonna hire a fleet of people.
That would be with mowing, more than...
Yeah, without, without mowing, if you keep, yeah, if somebody else is gonna do it all mowing.
If somebody else is doing the mowing, I don't know. I mean, as long as it's packed in streets, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But what if, what if twenty-hour a week person served you up, exactly?
What's that?
With twenty, cause somebody's helping you out twenty hours a week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be really tough.
He got Dave working twenty hours in a coat and coat, he could probably ask twenty hours of him and he could take care of the weekend sometimes for Dustin, some people get time off.
I like going down there and helping, okay. It's harder to get back up and down.
That's your problem.
Grab these kids and they don't. That's, that's a, maybe, David's, David's been helping with the streets and he's been helping Dustin out. And, uh, if, you know, if Dave is willing to work twenty hours a week and you guys are happy with that and, um, I don't have any issue with that. Or if you'd like to open up to, to advertising to somebody else or whatever, but it's pretty hard. We, we have, of all the seven people that we have, or eight people, other than our full-time people that are helpers. I can't find a better group of people that I would trust and I know that they're gonna not be hard on their equipment. And they're gonna be, I'm trying to do the job and we need to be successful. I think we're just truly blessed with our Marlene and our people that help us mow. We just, I don't think we can find a better group of, of part-time people. We're really fortunate.
We got, we got Leon Moe and we got, uh, Laura Morrison and we got Tiffy and Danny and then Gary Bolter helps out there. And then Russell works in there. He helps drive a truck when Dave can't do it all. He's gotta have a, Gary knows how to drive a truck and so does Dave, so the one can't make it, so that much fair. I think it's twenty hours a week and Dave's gonna be doing that coat and course with the other twenty. I think that would not be sufficient.
You would have visited with him, just keep somebody that you think I've been talking about? You have talked to him.
Yeah, Dave has requested to open us out twenty hour a week.
Oh, did he open the, I'm sorry.
Right?
Yeah.
The only, the only thing is then, then, then that way, if we do it that way, then that makes him a full-time employee with benefits, but you just want you to be aware of that. And you become a, have the same insurance.
I don't want any generous, I don't.
Okay.
I don't need the benefits and I don't.
All right.
You're hired.
So that, that's what he can be here, the, the subject.
We have to talk about why you said pay out to, to.
Can you pick up your paycheck underneath a rock, I was saying?
He doesn't always put twenty dollars in the coat enforcers.
Right, yeah, that's right. His coat enforcer paid a twenty dollars an hour, wait till an hour, but he does not, not very often. I've not seen it yet, we haven't either, where he's putting twenty hours a week doing it, that's the max. And this other thing would just kind of just be twenty hours.
Sure.
Right, and.
I wouldn't like to be full time then.
No, no, okay, so I guess as long as we're doing this, and Dave right there, we can discuss now, he's been helping us out at sixteen. But I don't know what you want to, in relationship to everybody else, I don't know, I don't remember right offhand, will we pay Mr. Bolter or Mr.? Or Mr. Schumaker here, I don't know, I don't know what we pay him, but.
They're all hands.
Then, yeah.
That's just seasonal.
That's just seasonal and that's because he has exact, it's known for moving.
If need to, I could help out when I'm done with working for, at the school for lunch too, if you need me.
I can give you simple details on that, coat enforcer, for them or not. Four back, four back, how many hours to do this job, how many hours to do this job and then we go. And that's what we're currently. Right, yeah.
I think we did, Dave had the same rate that he delivered that someone, then it's just, he was a footwork.
That's if you're all good on that.
Do we pay people a special one, is there a special knowing rate?
Sixteen, yeah. You all, the mowers are sixteen, sit on the mowers for sixteen hours an hour. I realize they're using equipment and it's a potential danger, but everyone that I talked to was happy with the sixteen hours an hour. So we can change that too if they want to, but. Okay. Also, motion's been made second to hire, Dave on that's twenty hours, we'll leave you at twenty dollars per hour. All right, okay, with that, Pikes?
Yes.
Lawren?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Okay, moving on to old business is, uh, paint some parking lines on Main Street, uh, West and Third. And I think we have an estimate in our quarters behind our dollars.
Yeah, and that's, that's in front of that, yeah, that's one, that area they went there, marked a little corner parts. When they were little adults and stuff, they don't get smacked and something's trying to drive into them. And that's over there by the lumberyard, I guess, too, is what he kind of said.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, isn't it? Oh, Lawren?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yep.
Okay, the next item of business is the city council had a change of meetings to get this all worked out. We're gonna say not on Tuesday, because Tuesday's a bad day. Uh, so what do you, what do you want to do? Uh, we, I think it became to this point, cause we had concerns about being the same that is the school board. And so there are people obviously that want to attend both and have vested interests. And so that's the second Monday, I believe, right? Second Monday of every month, so I, I don't know, it's, it's a.
We've got to keep it in the second week because according to Chantel, um, and our folks and our payroll, everything is working out better this way. We do some charging, there are bills, is that correct?
We have a auto, uh, payments that are set up for right after the second Monday of the month. Those would all have to be changed, dates would have to be changed on that, cause we can't say anything until you guys okay it. So could we do the third Monday of the month? That would mean we'd have to change everything.
So we can just say it in the second week?
Yeah, we got the second.
In the second week, but it can't be Monday or Tuesday.
And it can't be the first Monday of the month?
Right, the billing, that must have been, yeah, cause that's why it was, but that's why we changed it. We don't get the claims.
Wednesdays aren't, Wednesdays aren't you meant to? I mean, it's probably the religious stuff.
It doesn't, the only message on that's been kept, you know, I remember.
I don't need you at all.
There's never any volume though, anyway.
No, because, because of that.
I have volumes, I read my students.
Oh, like baseball game? I would, I would say more false sports, football stuff, but that, sorry, I didn't consider that.
Um. Thursday?
Thursday. You agree with that?
Come following, switch from baseball to football, football, this one's with basketball.
Yeah, we go to the summer camp, come to the fall, and we were like, can you, David, Wednesday, and you agree with that? How many motion changes, first and then?
So we'll have the second, Thursday.
Second, Thursday.
So it'll be June thirteenth.
Perfect.
Okay, we would make the motion to that?
That would. How many have the motion?
I'll say, motion's made in second, uh, Murphy?
Yes.
Pikes? Lawren?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, moving on, pool prices and starting with Dave, so move, move to your sheet there. Obviously, uh, we're gonna go, um, we did, if you clearly can see, we went back to the traditional. Swimming lessons are two weeks long. Um, last week we had a, since last year we had a situation where there were five days and we had three, one chemical day and two other days. And people paid for five days lessons and we have two. So we wanted to make sure we got it back on schedule to make it right with, uh, the patrons and Dustin attending that for their kids in the pool. We do have, still have, uh, an issue because a lot of our lifeguards now which number nine?
Have you hired them all tonight?
If, if we hired them all tonight, nine of their lifeguards?
I thought it would be eight.
Okay, eight or nine, whatever, I can't remember for sure. Whatever, if, if we hired them all tonight, we still can't, it's still hard to get filled. Um, those lesson times because of conflict with those lifeguarding athletes and being their environment as they have. But with that pool, we should be okay, right? We should be able to make that work. And I realize that, you know, it's nicer if lessons are in May or June, you know, so that the kids would have these swimming lessons, have these capacities to go in the pool and play around more. But we still have to do what we can to make this work, so. That's entirely, and, and the recommendation is by Donna, and, and she talks to more people about this than I do, is that we, for this year, we keep the prices the same as last year. And then hopefully next year we'll have a, a down year and then the following year we'll have a great pool. Everything goes to plan and then we can make some adjustments there if we need to.
I think, yeah, the days of July are just warmer than today.
Right.
Do we have?
I, I think those are the warm sessions.
Early, mid May, early May.
They want to get.
Oh, yeah. July, yeah. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, I don't have that. I make a motion to approve the hours and prices and dates.
On second.
As.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Uh, with that, of course, obviously I'll get that to our technology personnel, if you're concerned. And that'd be nice to put that on Facebook page tomorrow, right? So that evidence, that would be a great investment. So Pikes?
Yes.
Lawren?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Yes, I have a comment, and you are your work.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much.
And you need to even go inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, there was, I don't know, the counter, there was just, it was growing mold on this.
I have pictures.
I don't. And, and so I, I'll tell you that as part of this, cause we're kind of on a pool deal, is that she reached out to me, took some pictures, I went down and accounted just.
There was mold.
All, so in the bills, what you already. I should question the, the help of.
Right now, we took out, what was the, yesterday? Yeah, it was yesterday.
It's all.
Um, uh, took out the bench in the office and we put in the new one today. But we still have to put in the new board in the boys' bathroom. And then, um, I would like to replace that one board in that open window, um.
Yeah, the ledge.
Yes.
The sill for that one, that, it's a two by twelve, we need to cut it there. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, and I will, I will, as long as we're here, in this pool, extended invitation to, not to take away from her artistic ability, but if you have somebody sitting around that, that, that wants to paint, I'm sure she could use help. Then, and I think you have color by number, right? You have a picture right there, so you, you guys like me, not, you know, the color, depending on what it was.
A lot of detail.
Yeah, I'd ask, thank you so much. Okay, so we did that, we voted on that.
Yep.
I would like to treat.
Okay, so next thing would be the hiring of the lifeguards for the pool.
We're not, we have a close session, I think they have a look at the, the applications, recording the hiring, the close session. I think they need to have a process.
Yeah, well, we'll see, I'm ready. I have myself, I know every one of the applicants that are on there and I don't have issues with them. Nicole, your pool manager has met and spoken to each one of the applicants. If you want to go through their, uh, job applications and then come out of close session and then hire them, or if you're okay with Nicole, who's gonna be the supervisor, we can go ahead and hire them now.
Two of the lifeguards I found out that are related, I just.
Can you just show me the list?
I don't have a list, I have their applications, which you need to see in the close session. If we, if I can tell you their names, though.
How many motions would it be? To both, uh, local lifeguards, hiring. Should we just do that and then come back out again, or do you want to wait and do that in the third, the close session? Okay.
I make a motion for the close session. Oh, second, I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made in second and goes in close session to discuss the hiring of the summer pool person now. Uh, with that, we, we, uh, Lawren?
Yes.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yep.
Can we talk about, we're not going into close session twice, so we can talk about everything now, right? So we need to make another motion to go in the close session to talk about these other things?
Or you just want to do this, do this and then go down the rest? So we go, people, they, because of the order of the agenda, uh, you do it toward there. That's why I thought you just wait till the end and we'll be happy and like want to go closer. We can do this and then come back out, or do you want, because of the.
What else do we need to do?
Turn the deals.
We'll set, can we have a talk?
Yes, the poll is down there.
What is it?
Litigation, poll hire easement.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
So we can just go to the, the close session one time?
Yes. Right.
So should we do that now or let these other people talk?
We can have a talk, that's fine.
That's all right. We want to reset and.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm watching to go down.
Wait, I need a second, thirty seven? I'll second thirty seven. Okay, then I need a vote for it.
You have, so it's Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to reports from planning and zoning.
Um, it's been a little slower for permits, but I only have one thing. I don't know, I may have to act each for a year or not, but, um, we have a resident, uh, Gary Lord, Jan Lord's property. They have a piece of city-owned property that runs right through their property. Originally supposed to be an alley, it was never an alley. Um, they divise their property basically almost a third, one third, one third. And it's very close to the Black Hills pumping station there. Um, and he came into planning and zoning, requests that, you know, could we vacate that since nothing's ever been done with it?
They've been, they've been taking care of that.
Sixty years, sixty years. Um, so we looked at it and planning and zoning, it made sense. Um, we've been talking about starting to look at some of those properties, you're selling what they need. Uh, the problem is that we always have the past doing it was, it seems like they stay law, you vacate a galley then, or a piece of property. Whoever are owning adjacent sides all get a portion of it, half, for example. Um, in this case, they own the north side of it, and then they own the south side of it, six feet between that portion and the gas company. So it's not dividing it to property homes, only one. Um, so we looked at it and I went to some old vacates that we've done in the past, I don't have to go back quite a ways. And I wrote up kind of a, I, I guess it would be an ordinance, I'm not sure, a resolution to vacate it. And it sounds like to do that, we would have to write it up.
Make who's, who would word it.
And then agree to it, um, the mayor and the city clerk. And then that would get sent to the county. And I don't know how it works from there, but I think what the county does is then just gives it to that person, splits the.
And that, and that was there, but there was no Omaha Street dollars.
Yeah, I think that was a original.
That was, that's, that came after, when they had that property, before there would be from Omaha Street, that was just a railroad grade activity.
Oh, true.
So there was no, there was no other business or anything, or there's not a railroad rate at the railroad company.
So we'd like to move forward in this and, and use it as kind of our groundbreaker to learn how to do it. Um, we're not asking to do anything tonight, I think the way to proceed is, I would give, you know, Donna a copy of this. And then she could have the attorney or Dean could look at it, put the word proper word in. And then I can do a little bit more investigation and knock some of how that gets handled. And then once we feel that we've got this all arranged properly, then we can move ahead and talk about the signature, get the sign.
Won't you have to have a hearing for that piece of ground that you're talking about?
Not to make it.
Um, they don't. That's a, the gas company, they won't know a piece for that.
Yeah, a little triangle or split there. And, you know, part of what we would be putting in our letter or information or ordinance or resolution is that any easements that are currently at the property would remain in the property. So we don't believe there's anything going underneath there. But even if they did, they still have the easement. Just like they. The property owner owns it, but the utilities have the easement, you can't do anything with it.
And definitely you point out that thirteen, fifteen different little parcels like that are on the.
Well, there are a lot of, some we would probably recommend to sell.
Right.
Versus try to split them up with, you know, eighty different owners in there, but, um, in this case, there's only one owner on both sides. Um, that's what we'd like to move ahead with and, and that we've done tonight, but that's, that's what we're working on, we'll probably work on a few more this year. Um, but I think if we can, if we feel comfortable with that, I'll work with Donna and proceed, making sure we have our dots and keys crossed. So, that's, that's the, we have for planning and zoning. Economic development, Aaron emailed me just before, or before I came here and, uh, so what happened is that economic development has had a plan that was approved by council for, that had allotments for people that started new businesses, that improved their businesses, just people that bought new homes, people bought homes at over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in value. And there was specific dollars attached to each one of those. And the council approved it, um, word was spread, it was out there, made commitments to people, and then, uh, health issues, the wheels kind of fell off the bus in development, so consequently, and I guess the current administration at that time as well, we were able to, as a, as a city, give back one check of twenty-five hundred dollars, I believe, out of the ninety thousand dollars that's in economic development. And we've not been able to get back to speed to start putting this money forward. Um, so, the new economic development group, um, has a plan where, and I don't know exactly the timing of this, or how they want to do this, but they'd like to exclude what the council has already agreed on for the homes and just go forward with businesses. And I expressed my concern with them because we, and as former, and council, and mayor and city administration, we made a promise to people. And, uh, I, you know, sure, there would be a grandfather on that, like, we'll go back to 2022 as the original agreement said, go to a definitive date in time, stop, and then move to the new plan, which would just be businesses and would include what we promised in the past. Now, that's, it's entirely up to you what you want to do. If you want to say, hey, what we made promises for the past, we're not going to keep those. Now, we're in a new era and we're moving forward, and if things are going to be different, it's kind of, it's up to you. I just, I just feel so bad.
Is there a number of people back on the board? That's what I'm hoping on the board, that money is supposed to go to the new homes and start businesses and stuff like that. Is there a number of, how many people?
That was going to be capped at twenty thousand dollars.
Right, so twenty thousand dollars over.
Right.
But is there a number of, in the past, like you said, 2022, is there people that have their names on that list that they've given up?
The only one that ever had the paper were given to them was Aaron. The only one that ever received a check was her.
Right.
The other ones that weren't extended, they were just promising it was going to happen.
They never had their.
Were never given the opportunity to, to fill out.
Well, if they're still in town, I think we need to go back to that promise.
I, like, that's my point. I don't know how we do, we promise. Thank you. I don't know how we can. We have to.
Yeah, we gotta go, we gotta go with what we, what was already voted on and said, if that people were told to get blessed.
But we have to.
Have people applied for it that haven't received the money?
No, no, we, the app, the application process, only one person picked up an application, right? The applications at that point in time were, we, in this, right here, this very, that twenty-five hundred dollar check, whatever, five thousand or whatever it was for Aaron. Twenty-five hundred dollar check.
Aaron.
Kind of, Phillips.
Or the.
I had to actually physically go to the office and, and watch that check being written for her to get it. And, and so the rest of it, the other people were never given the opportunity to fill out the application, what was promised.
We have a list of ten people, of them named.
Who are the people that would qualify if no one has filled out the application? And I can't find the applications. I've worked everywhere. I can't find them.
I have a copy of the application. Yeah. And it's, it's, there's, it specifically states, these are the criteria. If you meet these criteria, you get twenty-five hundred dollars. If you meet these criteria, you get fifteen hundred dollars. If you're a business and a new business in town, you get these criteria, what, this money. And it was done.
Like, there's no pending applications, where people that are expecting money.
There's people expecting money but never given the opportunity to apply.
Why, why haven't they applied for it?
There's.
They stopped.
There's no application.
December of twenty-two, waiting for the change of the, actually, October of twenty-two, waiting for the change of the administration.
So, what were you saying about, how did you want?
Yeah, there was a debate, July seventh, twenty twenty-two was when it was retroactive to. And then we'll just, you know, people come in and say they bought their house first and we'll get to, if we make it to our twenty thousand dollar threshold, which we probably won't, maybe we will, hopefully we do, if we do, then we'll just go back, you know, who did first in order, when we reach twenty thousand dollars now.
We need to research and sell all of them.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. But I just, my, my just heart just tells me I can't. I can't vary that. I can't.
Should we go to the paper, whoever, you know, the house, the law?
When you get, sorry, if you approve this, that's what we're doing. Then we're going to go do exactly what the plan was.
Yep.
And when we get to that sunset money, whatever it is, we'll move on with the new plan.
Yep.
And the new plan, I'll tell you, is, is business only for seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and so that would make no difference. And Murphy?
Yep.
Pikes?
Yes.
Woburn?
Yep.
Fantastic. I will do whatever it is possible to get the original or an original copy of that application to you as soon as possible so we can get a document, put a paper away with people. Thank you very much. Okay, reports, um, from city, Donna?
Um, I just got a couple of things. I wanted to let you know that, um, uh, our website has changed names. Um, the, um, domain from it was down, um, it had needed to be paid. I couldn't do anything with it. It actually is in a former city clerk's name and, uh, when it wants to send me a, so I wanted to change password, I wanted to try to get in it. It wants to send it to her cellphone. And unfortunately, it was Arlene, so that's not going to happen. Will not let me change it. We had to go through and do a whole new one. We purchased the domain and put up a whole new website. It's actually at, um, cityofcrawton.com. Cityofcrawton.com is our new website. Um, also, uh, the same thing is, that's what's wrong with Facebook. It was put into, and this needs to be changed, and I'm making notes for this of any other clerks that come in. They put it down in their names and in what, in the Facebook thing, um, used, again, their cellphone. I tried to change it. They won't let me do City of Crawton because it's already taken and I have tried everything to cancel it and cannot. And it wants to send me, I have the password, but because nobody's been into it for such a long time, it wants to send me a code and it wants to send it to Arlene's old cellphone. So, it's, it just can't be done. And I can't set up a new one for City of Crawton because it's already got one. And that's, that's our big problem. Well, that's what we did with the website, cityofcrawton.com, before it was, uh, just cityofcrawton.org or whatever. So, it's changed. It's on there. You just have to kind of look for it if there's any website.
Twenty twenty-four, uh, crawton.com, something like that, that's crawton, if I change twenty twenty-four.
Well, maybe.
Try, try this in the name.
Yeah, it'd be a new Facebook page.
Yeah, that, did that look through the.
But that's what I mean, you personally. And I did talk to Didi about it. Someone just has to make. I just want to let you know what that certificate, do all the work, but it has to be someone that knows what they're having.
I just wanted to let you know why it's not up and it's not getting updated.
They're difficult, give contact information. She was in.
I sent it to you, I texted it.
Okay, thank you.
Also, uh, quickly, um, Art's is changing, get help again, uh, Art's garage is, uh, and we sent out the letters. I, I gave you guys a copy of it. We put those in the bills and we have it posted and, um, uh, Brooke actually did a story about it too. They are not going to have a truck that has an automatic pickup on it. So, you have to have your, your towed a certain direction and a certain place and away from so much stuff so that the arm doesn't come down and hit your vehicle or anything. So, we did put that out and now they have to be out by five AM in the morning. Uh, so, you might want to put those out the night before. But just to let you know, that's what's going on, that, uh, they, they're changing things again.
So, are the other group heads up for cash?
Uh, and not this time, you can't even have your, your can heaped up. It has to be level and that's all they'll take is what's.
If somebody wants to purchase two caches.
Yeah, I actually have many customers that have two.
My wife's got daycare in Orange. I'm glad to get her full there, so.
It's additional eleven dollars a month is all, so if you can fill up. Oh, absolutely, especially in the summer. Went out in the summer, so, just to let you know that. That, as I said, went out in the building. So, other than that, um, I have good news. Uh, everybody's still making their payments on the arrears. It's slow coming in. I have to tell you a quick story. Dustin flushed hydrants yesterday and I had one customer who's behind and making slow payments, came rushing in, thought that we had shut their water off, because their water stopped, and had cash in their hand. And I said, oh, we're just flushing hydrants when you get water. And he kind of looked at the money, he goes, well, I was going to pay Friday anyway, so here. So, he brought me money, so I got extra money on that, uh, deal. So, I told Dustin, we might want to look into that and start flushing hydrants where, uh, his home is old, so. But other than that, though, everything's going pretty good, so.
No, this is on the janitor, she brought up hydrants, we're getting on the fire hydrant, didn't we order a bunch of them?
Right, right now, I need to order some more.
Okay, so the ones we did order, did we order some last year?
There was some installed. One I had ordered is in already.
And they're installed or just in?
Uh, the one that I did order is installed already.
And how many, how many do we got left to fix?
I think ten.
Okay, so we were ten at one time?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Did we agree to order all of this?
I thought we did.
Oh, we agreed to order all of them?
Everything.
Why is there a headache? So.
I'll get, I'll get.
About to give you any more words, don't get, now you got a partner, so. Yeah.
Uh, just a quick question on the trash. Like, I have a unique situation up there with a house in the shop there. Do you have to go through the city or get the trash? Or do you have another, or, or a place that you can get your trash taken from?
Oh, I got a dumpster that I don't go to the city. I get to Art's, but.
That's what I'm saying, like, if I had a dumpster, I wouldn't be too trashy.
Yeah, I got a, a garden, I have dumpster at the shop.
So, you still get charged to the city?
No, I get, I get charged right from the Art's. I get thirty-four dollars for, to pick up.
A month. So, you can cancel the, the city trash.
Yeah.
And alternate.
I, you know, mine's just construction, I don't, yours is going to be a lot of that, that garden I have too, uh, construction stuff, your business.
So, your question is, can you cancel the city? Do you get charged or whatever? Can we cancel this garden?
We, we have commercial, uh, people now that don't pay us for arts. They pay directly through Art's for their dumpsters. So, we just take it, we put it commercial consulting.
His residence is the same dumpster as the business.
It's, it's, yeah.
So, then would he have both, or could he just have the commercial one and put his residential in as a charge?
It's kind of up to you guys.
Why wouldn't you?
If you just tell Art and then you ask him what it's going to be, and I say, everything, I do construction, you know, and I do that, I got that meat covered, so they go over there, so I don't see why they want that to do it.
My, my question is, can I cancel the city tur trash?
I think it's fine, but I've heard a story in the past where a resident wanted to cancel their trash and they're not allowed. But I think it's fine if the person wants to do that.
Cancel, just cancel.
We had one time, he was going to take the garbage and take it to his farm.
Yes.
That's what we had the problem. He was going to take garbage from his house that he, he lives in Crawford, and he was going to take it out to the farm.
It, it's still the same concept.
Yeah.
He wants to not pay his city trash.
I mean, the order, but the order says you have to have all three, yes, right?
I, I understand that.
Yeah, they just want to check into that. We, what's that? You want to just check that?
Yeah, let's, let's check, yeah, do it, we'll go.
Me too, it's all of it. I'm sure, you have to have more.
All right, anything else for us, Justin?
I don't think you covered everything.
Okay. All right, Chantel is not here, but, uh, we have that back page of information that you can take a look at and see what we're at on those balances and things that we could have there. In her report, I will ask for her is that, uh, we have, if you look on the page, there are multiple accounts which are carrying, um, substantial balances at this point in time. And those balances, and I have nothing against our current situation in our bank or whatever, but as you, as our bank president stood in front of us and told us the other day, is that CDs now are at five point five percent. So, what Chantel and I talked about an extended period of time is that, is it okay? I mean, we need to authorize her to, to put fifty percent of those account balances, which we can and still be viable in the CDs so that we can start making money off the market.
He also said that if we need some money out of some of the CDs, he definitely for two or three months, he was like that.
He borrows the money he covers.
No, we would take it, let it.
All that, yeah. Although I, I really do.
How, how, my left.
And why are we only doing two hundred thousand when we got one point three million?
And when would you eliminate?
Well, I don't know. I'm just asking for a minimum of fifty percent. We can do whatever you want, if you.
More than Mary.
I think we should.
Take all that money and put it in the. What's that?
I think we should put at least five hundred thousand.
I think we'll be. Okay, we could, we could pull it out without a penalty.
It's for five months. You can do five or nine months.
Because we are going to have some expenditures coming out, so.
Let's, let's figure that out. Let's figure out what the expenditures are going to be. Let's figure out what we can put in.
So, what we need to do is authorize Chantel to put the max in there that we can still operate with and entrust her to do that. She needs that on documented that we're going to let her do that.
All right, the motion we have with Chantel, what can you do?
And, and give her the.
To give her the authority to.
Okay.
I'll second.
Still, yeah.
Right, we've been kicking ourselves in the butt a long time. All right, well, that would be Pikes?
Yes.
Woburn?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
And then.
Yep.
Should we do five months or nine months?
Well, that's.
Whatever she finds the best rate.
It's the same rate.
Okay.
You just take an example about what the rate is going to be when that.
What it is. I, I think, well, I think, or not, we should do five, let that five go, it would go to rates.
And we can redo it, but it might be for a lower rate, or it might be a higher rate.
Can we put it into the money market?
We have, it's, we have looked at different options and we kind of decided that we would like to keep it in the city because if we invest with our bank here in the city, that money gets loaned out to our farmers and our homeowners and even though it might be a lower rate slightly than what other places are offering, we would still like to invest.
It'd be nice, Bill, to have it, something did come up with the money market.
Do they, do they allow that?
So, the best we can do?
They're comparable.
Okay.
You have a gentleman sitting. I don't know.
Yeah.
Money market is, is worth, it's not what I have, it's not.
Oh, yeah, we did look at.
Other guy was sure.
Just for the discipline. It's a big deal.
That's, that's what the, the bank said he was insured, the other guy that's trying to do, he wouldn't guarantee that he could insure.
They put it in the money market?
Yes.
I think it's pretty low risk because they invest, what he told us, uh, that they invest in was like federal.
Yeah.
Stuff, I don't know, bonds or, it was very low risk.
Sure.
But it was not in our economy.
Yeah, 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 I like, I like that, you can keep it in town. Reinvest it back.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Great, fantastic, moving on, uh, our code closure, do you have anything to add?
The house, the green room, the house on the main street with the green roof, the four weeks are off, so we can now take care of the lawn and clean it up. We're gonna have to, uh, cut the grass, clean up the garage. The garage door has to be secured, there's a window in the house that's broke, it has to be just boarded over. And there's a opening in the basement that has to be covered over. Cause we, what we said we were gonna do.
Is there somebody in that house?
No. Just stinks, it stinks, I, I was there the other day, closed the door again.
Can we just get rid of that house?
No.
For a while.
No, cause it's, we can't really get an owner of it. If we could find an owner, or we could make an owner, we could do something with it.
The house over here?
No, the house up there with the green roof on Main Street.
Next to the.
Oh, okay, I, I was thinking of that, sorry.
I was there the other day, closed the door again and, I mean, I was within twenty feet of knocking out from the garage. Stink coming out of the garage door.
Well, is that, is that a health issue?
It's gonna be here, it's right there.
I mean, is that a health issue, we could just step in and?
We could clean it up.
No, no, no.
What's the process?
Well, we see where the thing is, according to our attorney, we have to contact our owner. There is no owner.
There is no owner.
There is.
You have an attorney.
But we have to go through probate, we gotta probate it. And, and our attorney said it's not worth it, that it's time to do it.
Why not?
You can tell that, you can tell her lawyer, if somebody gives it from a wild animal, there's two daycare centers there, right? Okay, well, that's.
It's a criminal liability.
That's a liability, someone's gonna get hurt.
She was trying to, she was trying to get probated, but her attorney said, she wanted, her attorney wanted ten thousand dollars upfront to take the case.
What it means, for what?
To probate it?
To prob, get it probated, because, because according to her attorney, she would have to go back and find, somebody else.
Well, I thought we didn't know who owned it.
Well, the granddaughter has been paying the rent or the taxes on it.
Was it she owned it?
No. Is the owner?
It's never been.
How does she have any legal standing?
James, the owner.
I understand it, but who we, who we can get?
By the. There's possible, there's possible seven, could be seven siblings that could have ownership in the house. They're scattered all over.
Can't find them.
Her attorney wanted ten thousand dollars to contact them all.
To find them.
Probate it.
Do you have names? The one we have been in contact wants nothing to do with.
No, I talked to the brother also, the cousin, and he, he was not very happy, I even contacted him.
I mean, it's obviously the house should be condemned.
Right.
Can we tear the house down? Have you asked him if we can tear the house down?
Who you ask?
Whoever you're talking to.
Attorney, our attorney said we can't do anything, if we take care of it for, like, say this year, maybe by next year, we can go to court, we get a probate. And then the city can tear it down or sell it or whatever they wanted to do. That's what the city attorney said.
I think there's gotta be an easier way, since it is a health issue. It is a liability health issue for the city.
I, we can talk to the city attorney again, but that was what his advice was.
I'll try to make, I'll get my good fault. Because I'm like, you have, if, if I could do it, I'll just write that.
That was my name, that was about it.
That was my neighbor idea, and I promise. Go ahead.
Wouldn't, uh, there, there might be too many people involved in this, but a plain old quit, quit claim deed signed by whoever, uh, is making the payments might be an alternative, cause then it just, I don't have anything to do with this anymore.
One that's been paying taxes can't file, can't sign the quit, claim deed because she's not really the owner.
Uh, there's our complication here.
It's always a mess, but I, I suggested that the city go in and clean it up for now. But I did contact two lawn care servants and they weren't, they were not interested in it at all.
Well, my point is, it comes to, we could take the door and go, cause nobody's gonna live in that place with sticks. Take it off and the property could be theirs for a, the problem, the box, the, the building's gonna, whatever's gonna happen, the building's gonna have to get off.
Right.
We talked to mine, let's get all the leave and the penalties, let's see what else.
And if you make it, you could tell them right next door, so, a real, real bad situation right there.
And it has been posted in the paper for the four weeks that we were supposed to, and on the house, that it had to, what was wrong with it and what had to be done. So that had to be legally done, was put into two newspapers.
And I want to best another, I mean, let's bring up the ground, but.
Let's look into it. There's gotta be an interview.
And just, you can't actually start a fire cause it's too close to pot.
I mean, that's a bad school.
It's, 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 it's a, it's a health issue. Okay, I mean, wait.
Can you run a line?
Let me, let me look into it.
Also, okay, also on the house on, uh, Second Street, Jason, when they're gonna burn down, hopefully burn down, Jason's been working on the owner. Hopefully that, they taking care of.
What else is that?
And.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, little mind chimp. Thank you.
And the house on Herald Street that's in such bad condition, uh.
Is there somebody in that house?
Yes.
Yeah. There's somebody living in that house?
Yes. I talked to the owner the other day, we seemed to get all a lot better than the last time, he was very cooperative. Um, but I've been searching for grants, some money to get. And I did get ahold of, uh, the Northeast Economic District, uh, North Hope. And there is a grant out there called the Nebraska Affordable Trust Fund. But we can't apply until next March, because this year's money's already gone.
Sure.
But in March, we have to first apply and then May ninth, we have to have the final application in. But they, they will pay up to forty thousand dollars per home. There's no, there's no matching grant either, you say?
To do what with the home?
Well, to fix it up.
Oh, that home's not worth it.
No, that one isn't, well, there's another problem.
I mean, the guy, can we get him a lower housing, can we get him, I mean, the house is obviously not suitable to live in.
No, never been inside, so I.
No, I don't wanna go in there.
But I'm just saying, this is a grant that we can get next year to help other people out, because each, each home could get up to forty thousand dollars to repair. Or there's also, there's a grant, there's a grant there for, uh, like new houses. For new, and, uh, like apartment buildings or things like that, but like Ted, there's a, there's a no matching funds.
Is that guy willing to move out?
No.
Maybe he doesn't want to.
He won't move. And I, I did some search conduct records and he was signed in in two thousand fifteen for the same thing.
Yeah.
And nothing would ever happen. And that's about it.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our, and I don't know if you all had opportunity to meet her or not, but our pool manager, Nicole Dustin.
Hi.
Hi. She's a lunch lady, so she might be.
Um, I am the new pool man, pool manager, I made the flyers for hiring lifeguards in April. I have been working on the pool. I had some kids turn in some applications to me and I dropped them off at the city office. We roughly have eight lifeguards that apply. I have been power washing the building when the weather would cooperate with me. Um, when I was done power washing, I brought my shop back and shot back some of the paint chips that came off. I did my best cleaning them up. Uh, once I was done power washing the building, I told the kids if they wanted some hours, I was going to paint Wednesday, April twenty fourth. Bob was okay with that. Saturday, April twenty seventh, J C, my daughter Morgan, and I finished painting. It took two days of painting when the weather was nice. Uh, Wednesday, May first, I was finished up, uh, finished up the touch-ups and going around the trim. Uh, Friday, May third, I wanted to come in at night to draw the characters on the building, but it was raining. So Saturday, May fourth, I came in, raped up, uh, raped up some of the leaves in the pool. I cleaned the, cleaned the, cleaned the paint off the toilets and sinks and worked on my report. And I came back, uh, in on Saturday night, trace, tracing the characters from ten a.m. to at night to three o'clock in the morning. Shot back some more paint chips, the next few days I saw, will be painting the characters. Uh, on May ninth, the Sprackles girls and one of the girl's boyfriends came to the pool at four P M. and told me that they left some stuff, uh, from last year. I did not get a text message or a phone call from them saying that they were, uh, getting their stuff. So I called Bob and told him, and he said that they should have not done that. After I got done talking to Bob, I called Claire and she, um, called Claire and asked her if the Sprackles had a mini fridge, a pool, basketball hoop, and a, uh, plastic drawer with paperwork and some other stuff. Claire said, yes, Nikki brought that stuff and she would bring that stuff to the pool when it opened. I felt like I was bombarded and I did not appreciate that. May fourteenth, Tiffany and I worked on the schedules, uh, for the kids this summer at the pool. I found out yesterday, um, when we were working on the schedules, that Carmen is also working at Bloomfield Swimming. Um, I knew about J C working at Bloomfield Swimming. I did not think it was fair that they turn in their applications to us and go behind my back and work somewhere else when I expected them to work for us. I feel like the Sprackles are going behind my back, taking my lifeguards. I think we should have hired lifeguards a lot sooner. I am hoping to be open on Saturday, May twenty fifth for the pool. I'm excited working for the pool and I'm also excited working with you guys.
And it, she did bring it to my attention, of course, obviously that bench was, our table pit was destroyed and so I recruited some of my students and we built a new one and got it put in there, so that's all good. Got it all cleaned up and cleared up and going. And it is, it's just, it's a, it's a whole different pool now, cleaned up. And I would, you could get the last five or six colors of paint for us where you cleaned off the toilet. Like, because it was splattered with multiple different colors and it's white now again, so it's not all.
It was.
A lot of, yeah, but a lot of good things happened in there.
I feel that I should let you know that the lifeguards have always worked two different places, sometimes three, uh, being always scheduled in. We had them last year that worked at Yankton and some of the other places too.
But if they're gonna be applying, they should also tell me that they're also applying somewhere else. Not, yeah, cause when they're turning their applications to me, I'm.
I was expecting.
It's only for people who apply.
Yeah, I know.
Once they're hired and you have an agreement, they, what they're.
But I just don't appreciate what the Sprackles have been doing to me.
That's their right.
Ill and relevant, yeah, that's their right, but we deserve it. Yeah, and I just, I did make contact and ask if there are any further items that were personal belonging that they should reach out to me or call and let us know if you can get their personal. Cause let's put it in office.
I have a question, with the lifeguarding, do they put that on the school with like, those applications, do you guys advertise it there?
I don't think they did. I put flyers up myself at the school.
Okay, just so the kids know, and then do you pay for them to get their lifeguardings or?
Yeah, you should reimburse them.
Do you?
Okay.
After, after the year is successful, uh, lifeguard, we repay them for their.
I think it's like three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
We repay them, yeah.
After they work.
Nicole, you still need a lot to be done there?
I still got a lot of characters, I have roughly about eleven more characters to paint.
So if you cut it down there and you spread the wood, you can paint.
She's that one, like, drawn on the building?
Yeah, I traced them that night, I projected them late at night. I went to the library, asked if I could borrow their projector, they said, fine, and, and then I came at ten o'clock at night when it was nice and traced till three o'clock in the morning.
I used to be good at doing that. Yeah, there's pictures so you can match the color with number seven, number seven color or whatever. It's pretty cool, I, I think I can figure it out, but, yeah, again, thank you very much and, and I, I don't, the other circum, I don't know if you like. I wish I was there if I had, if we're adding back, but.
Could we possibly purchase a, uh, pool basketball hoop, like what the Sprackles had, or?
It's set alongside the pool where kids can shoot, it was kind of an entertainment kind of deal, so, I think you said fifty dollars.
I, I sent you some pictures.
It was fifty dollars.
Off of Am, uh, Amazon.
And there were other.
With the cheapest ones.
Or we did approve startup costs on the pool?
I just didn't know if.
Yeah, we did, and that's why I didn't, I didn't hesitate to get the new plywood to build the shelf, because it started from.
And that one that we had was the Sprackles and they do replace that.
Sure, right.
Cause I didn't know if, cause Tiffany thought that the city reimbursed them, but how could I know about it yet?
You just went to, that's fine, so we'll end the process, but yeah, that's make it, let's go forward with, if it's okay with you, we'll go, we'll get the new little hoop thing and then, uh, whatever, I mean, just let me know.
And then I did purchase, uh, some swimming lessons, uh.
Rings.
Rings and sinkers and some other fun stuff for the kids at the pool.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you for all you did, greatly appreciate it. Okay, uh, I guess it brings it to me, I have super exciting news, of course, obviously courtesy of, uh, um, Crofton Community Foundation, right?
Yep.
They brought to us, we, it was early, early this year, but I was reached out, Kim and somebody reached out to me and said, hey, uh, we did this, uh, in June, July last year, we'd like to drive it earlier in Crofton. And I'm like, yeah, so they said, well, can we come down Sunday night and set up portable, whatever you call it, not holes or whatever, but portable holes, you know? And I said, yeah, this, this, you know, I'm like, fantastic, so they come portable, set them up and it, it's, it must be a way more competitive thing than everything, because if, they set them up Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night? There were people down there practicing, like, and then Wednesday was lead night and I called them, there were fourteen cars in the school, in the swimming, in the swimming pool parking lot, there were fourteen cars that came to town for that.
There, there were people there practicing at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah.
I've been down there, so I see them.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was fantastic, it turned tremendous amount of interest, and one concern is that I did authorize them on behalf of the city to use whatever they wanted for city park, but I didn't tell them they could go into the school's parking lot or the school's practice field, that was, I don't know how that happened, but we'll make sure that doesn't happen. Again, but this, it's just walking on the grass and nobody got upset about it. But what, what came from that is that the community volunteer seized this tremendous interest and they were gracious enough to, last night, approved four thousand dollars for the purchase of that equipment. So they'd like to donate that to the.
Do you, did you print that out, that they've seen that?
I have. No, you, I don't have, I just, but, being, so, um.
Sir?
So there's nine holes and Dustin and I, we'll work all together, there's kind of like Joyce Stevens reached out to me the other day about putting a bench in the park that our two benches in the north park, one of which was St. Rose at Fun Ridge by the elementary school kids, and the original money to build the kid a bench, and she was worried about what we were gonna say to put it or whatever. I said, we trust them, put it where you need to, Dustin's gonna have to move around to where you put it, but anyways, so there's two new, I think there are two brand new benches right down there.
Ones are already.
Ones are already, yeah, okay, so that's. Ones are already, yeah, okay, so that, that's fantastic, and I just, you know, thank them for every minute that they have time and effort invested in the process. These are going to, uh, it's gonna be about four thousand for the equipment, I talked to Matt, I don't know his last name, but anyway, from, I'm gonna purchase them through, uh, Matt and Ace Hardware, right?
Yeah.
Yep, through Ace Hardware in Yankton, and, uh, so what we'll need to do is, and, that's where I kind of, so, as a normal, kind of a golf course, there are tee boxes, and the tee boxes typically, typically are three foot by three foot, two foot by three foot cement slabs, or just, they just level them off, so you start with one foot on there, and you start the process, right? And so, and then I volunteered myself and my kids to build a post, and then a twelve, twelve inch by twelve inch or eighteen inch sign with those, hole number one, um, par four, two hundred yards, and then, and cut a basic cut there with the, it's kind of, kind of look like a golf course. And, uh, so, I think, and the community foundation did tentatively agree to pay for two of those tee boxes to get this thing started as well, and so.
Right.
Talked to Delo Stevens, talked to whatever, for the post and the cement and whatever, so, we're looking for additional sponsors, and we had other people come forward, and so we, I think we have three of them sponsored at about a hundred dollars these, a piece, which will take care of the cement slab, the, the post, and the sign, all that kind of stuff. So, we're looking for additional sponsors for those other six holes to sponsor, so a corporate sponsor, or whatever happens to be sponsoring.
Yeah, and a sponsor. Like, like I suggested, to make the mowers life easier, if you look at that picture, they don't really show much of an area for the concrete around the post. I, I would like to see maybe an apron this big around, so that that Z T R can just go zip around there without having to veer it out.
Yeah, and, and Matt suggested, and I'm totally open, this is not my, it's yours, not my forte, is that he buys five gallon buckets, gets five gallon buckets, gets a twelve inch post hole digger, just puts the, the anchor part of it, the post, the base of it, into a five gallon bucket for quick cream. And then they're all set up, all six, all those nine are set up, then just goes and drills a hole, and drops that cement bucket into there, levels the wall up, and puts dirt in there, and calls it good. And then, we could put mulch around the bottom, or cement around, whatever we wanted on the bottom to make it, but.
Whatever's easiest.
Whatever's easiest, but we're trying to get sponsors for those, we have additional sponsors, that's fantastic for those holes, and, uh, Matt said it'd be, uh, timed two to three weeks lead time from the order for when they'd be here, that'll give us time to, somebody to walk through and say, put a mark here, and they get, of course, we'll have to get Digger's Hotline or whatever we do, so make sure we don't drill into some.
Have they seen the map of how the disc, had, had it set up, because I didn't, uh, my printer's on the first. But that was, that's, that's the setup they used last year, um, and as you say, this year, they decided they were gonna go over on the football practice field.
Number two.
Yeah. But on that one, number two went across the creek, and then they had to come back to take number three, which went, I believe, towards the softball fields.
This might threaten the safety of all, shall we do this?
Well, the, in, in the fall, uh, the Disc Golf Association sets up eighteen holes on length, on length. So, yeah, the, the, the last couple of weeks of golf season, there's, uh, usually disc golf targets all over the place out there.
And I guess they're not in opposition to if we could potentially get a couple of teams, maybe we all get, city administration, you can have a team of one, and go and play in the league, and then they'll vote in and come over here and play in our league.
Well, no, probably not, sorry, that, that would also go in with, you know, economic development, to make sure that this gets advertised, because there are people that run around and play disc golf in different places, just like people go to different places to play real golf. So, uh, you know, whether they stop in town to get a burger, or get some gas, or, uh, tell other people to come train the course, that's all good stuff.
And my blue Lambo won't work well.
No.
They have a whole stack of these things, like they have drivers.
Oh, yeah, these people are serious, they have backpacks with multiple driver's putters, uh, and, uh, they, they have things on wheels that they bring with them, so they've got their drinks and the, the whole ball of wax while they're doing this. Uh, but if you go into Ace over there, they have a wall that has all sorts of different styles of, of these disc golf, and, uh, Mary and I talked about it, and I don't know, it'd be kind of up to the golf, or golf, the swimming pool people, I, I'd like to buy two sets of the, uh, there's usually three of them, buy two sets of them, and donate them to the swimming pool, that they could rent out for a few bucks every time, uh, if anybody wants to play during the day, and they don't, they don't have.
So, it does start, if you look on there, starts at hole number one, starts at the golf, at the swimming pool, and makes a big loop, and ends up back at the swimming pool, so they can use that parking lot. And then, because that is a recurring, you know, thing, there's a grand line out there for, uh, to get a bathroom, and, and or other facilities have to be getting outdoor golf, disc golf courses, so we've got to look into other grand line to get something there, push another shelter or something, or maybe we can just incorporate that into our bathhouse.
I was gonna say, can you, can you have them build a new bathhouse?
Well, I'm not gonna quit trying, I know that, yep.
Is this something that the community can use, like, during the summer, if there's that league going on, that anybody can go down there if they have the equipment and just?
A yearly membership of eleven hundred dollars on just keep, I don't know exactly what we're gonna do, or whatever, have a free will donation box you play, or if there is a course around, or just go play, you know, whatever happens to be the case, it's something, because.
Yeah, there's, like, like down at Pearson Ranch, and, and down there on the, uh, around the camping areas, they're just there, there's nobody playing, you just go play.
And we have this large group of community members that are forty something, we do, that's our median, average years, forty years of age, and makes about eighty thousand dollars a year, so they can afford some discs, go play disc golf, and get out, you know, get a babysitter, or go play disc golf, or whatever you wanna do, so, for me, it's just, it's, it's a huge thing, and, and I personally applaud every player that had anything to do this, and making this happen, and Dustin, for what the incommious can be for both, thank you, advanced Dustin, whatever happens to be the case, and I, and I think Kate probably might help us out with the auger, otherwise I have a twelve, I can get, not me personally, but I can borrow a twelve inch auger, to do those kind of post holes, or whatever. And I am looking into somebody pre-making the three foot, like, three foot by four inch slabs, so we can just put them there, so we don't put them on site, and order them, so hopefully we can make it all that way, so, going in the right direction.
So, cause it's kind of, the four thousand, the disbursements are in gift process, so none of it is seen from the foundation, and then on sponsoring, we thought, the foundation sponsoring two holes or goals, is, nobody really knows how much it's gonna cost, once that's done, then we'll get an invoice with the two holes, and then we'll, like, give them a check, right?
Yeah, I just went through the estimate, uh, one bag of quick cream, one, a five gallon bucket, you know, they're laying around, or whatever, the cement slab, the post, and the materials to make it, because we're not gonna charge anything for that, but the materials, it comes up about sixty nine dollars a hole, and that's, I figured if we were gonna do them for a hundred dollars, for sponsorship for a hundred dollars, we should be able to turn out, right, just, that way.
But for us, we'll just get an invoice and start.
Yeah, all right.
Or whoever.
And if you volunteer, just let me know on the email, or I say, I want hole number seven, or whatever, I want the number seven, or whatever happens to be the case, we'll get your name cut in there with a laser engraver, and get us signed, and take it, so. And again, thank you, uh, once again, very, very proud to be in this community, and I'm super excited about the steps we'll make in the future, thank you very much. So, with that, I believe if we would have a motion to go into a closed session for this time, okay?
Make, make a motion to go into a closed session for a, for the litigation pool hire, for even the property, to talk about hiring personnel, to do grant writing, and potential hire for our chief, please.
I'll sit. And so, it would be, yes, sir, heights, and.